Mr. Chair, your microphone is muted in the town council chambers.
Okay, I hear me now, buddy?
Got you.
Okay, thank you. You didn't miss much, except that you are here. And Howard was appointed as the alternate member, and of course, we did the pledge of allegiance. So we are now at citizens petitions. This is the opportunity for anyone who's not already on the agenda to make a presentation. I see Mr. Treister is here. And do you, Eric, yeah, yeah, you can go ahead and do it now if you want.
Thank you.
It's your call.
Yeah, I'm gonna take about four or five minutes if that's all right.
Okay.
Before I begin, so glad to be here in person. Before I begin, I want to repeat my appreciation for Juliette being on our county. I think she's wonderful. She and I disagree. She and I agree on about 95% of things. But unfortunately, we have a 5% serious disagreement. And I'm hoping that we can just simply agree to disagree and let it go forward. And I'm hoping that that's the case. The, she's clearly an asset to the town. I did two things yesterday and today. I took a close look at the Juliette's application number 22-3R, which is the replacement for section 8.1 in the zoning regulations regarding accessory apartments. And I'd like to pass out some of the work that I did and I'm going to read two or three paragraphs out of this. And in the process of that review, I discovered a couple of really interesting things. As some of you know, I'm an engineer by training and I like to find interesting things. One of the things is that, as proposed, I'm sure this preliminary can always be fixed. But if you go to item number eight, which is on the back of the first page, the proposed reg has a provision in it that the accessory apartment can be 1,000 square feet if it is in or attached or above a garage.
Over 30% of the size.
So, doesn't say that.
In the statute it does.
I know, but it doesn't say that in the replacement for 8.1. So the, so what that means is that if someone has a 750 square foot principal dwelling and has an attached or detached one-story 1,000-foot garage, which would be a five-car garage. I'm gonna have to mind, but it is possible. Or if they put in an application to build a five-car garage, which is allowed by right, the proposed such as 8.185 will allow a 1,000-square-foot three-bedroom accessory dwelling unit to be in or above that garage as the proposed 8.1 is written.
So wait, Eric, one thing, the garage itself has to be, can't be more than 80% of the size of the principal structure on the property because it's an accessory. That has to be less than the principal structure. So you could never have a five-car garage. It's accessory to a 750 square foot. No. Well, I know, yeah, I was making sure, but you don't, do you have any of that?
No. Okay, so yeah, I just thought that was an interesting observation, not as a deal. But if you go through there, you'll see some little technical details. The proposed regulations, you can turn ADU, the act uses the term accessory apartments. I think they should be consistent. The the proposed regulation limits accessory apartments to only an approved single-family residential lot. However, the act appears to require to allow a accessory apartment on any single-family dwelling on a residential lot. Some difference, but there is a difference. The the proposed 8181 states that no more than one ADU is allowed for parcel, which is a technical conflict with the act, which does everything by lot, not by parcel. And in my opinion, there's a difference between a lot and a parcel. I think the proposed regulations should be what? The proposed A1A3 states that the ADU may be either attached or detached. This is incomplete because 682, the act allows accessory apartments to be located within proposed existing principal dwellings, which would not be attached or detached. It would be internal, minor, but there. The the number six, the proposed A1A4 states that the floor area on the attached or detached ADU should not exceed 30% of the total floor area of the primary dwelling unit, not including finished basements. With an overall maximum of 1,000 square feet, except for primary dwellings with a floor area less than or equal to 1,200 square feet, the ADU may be increased to a maximum of 420 square feet or the minimum set forth in the applicable building codes, whichever is greater. For an ATU, ADU located entirely in the basement, there should be no maximum size then. The problem is that the building code does not specify a minimum floor area for a single family dwelling.
Yes.
It specifies other things, but not for the entire single family dwelling. Specialized room sizes, but not the size of the minimum. The the act uses the term net floor area. And is, and that's not the same, in my opinion, it has total floor area, less finished basement. I think there's a difference between that four area and total floor area, less finished basements. Finished basements are finished, if they did live down. And whatever the answer is to that issue, the term net floor area needs a definition in section 2.2. Under 8.12B in the zoning regulations, a single-family home can be as small as 540 square feet. The proposed section A1A4 will allow an accessory apartment to be 420 square feet, which is almost 80% of the size of the principal structure. And the question that the commission should ask is that is allowing a detached accessory apartment that is almost the same size as the principal structure a good fit for ledger? And this is a policy, policy issue. It's up to you to decide. I would say no, but it's not my decision. Also, under the act, the owner of a 550-foot single-family home will have the right to build a 162-square-foot accessory apartment in his front yard. Same issue, are you certain that allowing a detached tiny 162-foot accessory apartment in a front or rear yard by right is good for ledger? Again, it's a policy issue. If you don't want to do this, you have to opt out of the act. The first sentence. The number nine is interesting. The proposed A1A6 clarifies that RVs, manufactured or mobile manufactured homes and tiny homes are not allowed as an ADU. Tiny homes are generally recognized as homes less than 400 feet. They are readily available with configurations that are attached to permanent foundations and comply with Connecticut building code. Tiny homes are not allowed as single-family homes in ledger only because they are smaller than 540 feet, as reported by 812 regulations. The definition of an accessory apartment in the act states accessory apartment means a separate dwelling unit that A is located on the same lot as the principal dwelling unit of greater square footage, has cooking facilities, and complies with any applicable building code, fire code, and health and safety regulations. As such, if a tiny house complies with the building code and is 30% or less than the than the net floor area of a principal structure, and under the act, it cannot be prohibited from being a detached accessory apartment. Opting out is the only solution that this is not acceptable. The number 11 is sort of interesting, and I'm not sure if I know the answer to it, but it does raise a yellow flag. The proposed 8188 states a new driveway curb cut to serve the principal units, the principal unit, or an ADU shall not be permitted. Under the act, I am not certain that the combination of a need for a new curb cut combined with the ZEOs inability to issue a permit for that new curb cut by the proposed rec change is sufficient grounds to deny an application for an accessory apartment. I personally don't think so. Harry might want to jump in on this. Number 12, I think it's just an error. The proposed A1A9 states that one additional parking space shall be provided for a studio or one-bedroom APU and two additional parking spaces shall be provided for a two-bedroom APU. However, if a lot already has three or four or five parking spaces, then none of these, then it should not be, then an additional parking space should not be required. The next one is, I did an analysis of analysis of the application 223R, A, and why the PZZ should opt out in order to implement those regulations. One of the things that jumped out at me is that the act prohibits separate billing for utilities for the accessory apartment, including a detached accessory apartment. In my mind, this creates all sorts of interesting problems. For example, if the principal dwelling is rented out and the accessory apartment is rented to an unrelated entity, an unrelated person that's also rented out and the electric panel is in the principal dwelling and the resident in the principal dwelling does not pay the electric bill, what does the resident in the accessory dwelling unit do? The interesting problem, the only way, the only way to solve that problem is to opt out of the act. Similarly, if there is, if the circuit breaker trips in the principal dwelling unit that provides power to the accessory dwelling unit and the resident in the accessory dwelling unit has no way of getting to that circuit breaker, again, what is the sequence of events that follow that part proper? And do not place the resident in the accessory apartment at risk. Related to that matter is the act prohibits a the act prohibits and the act prohibits an interior or attached accessory apartment to have an interior doorway directly into the principal dwelling. Prohibits it, it's not allowed. Which means the same thing, if the power, if the resident in the principal dwelling turns off its electricity, the resident in the accessory apartment will suffer. The, I believe we should require that there be a pathway from the accessory department into the principal dwelling. But we cannot do that unless we opt out of the act. So yeah, there's several things in there. You can read them at leisure. And in the next couple of minutes, I will send an electronic copy of these two things, for the record.
And I will point out, we say you're prohibited from requiring it. That doesn't mean the builder can't. We just can't require it, but if they want to do it separately, they will, and I'm sure they would.
I need to double check. All right. Any other issues in there that hopefully you'll be discussing at the appropriate time. And as you know where I stand on this, you and I disagree on this, but I think our residential neighborhoods are sacrificing. I don't think we should allow tiny houses in front yards or in backyards, yeah, especially in existing residential districts.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gerald.
Good evening. It's the new guy. He's completely unconstrained. He's not on any border condition. He doesn't work for the town. I think they just thought anything he wants to. As Bill Song said last night during the town council meeting, and what's different about that? So what I would ask, I mean, everybody heard Eric's proposal. You've got his written comments. I would ask, if you opt out, what do you intend to do later? Because as we heard earlier on our housing affordability plan initial discussions, those who opt out are opting out till they can write regulations. John pointed out that our director of land use has already done that, and you have them for review. And I think that's part of the question on opting out. If we opt out, then what? There's nothing that prevents changing regulations after you set them. Some of the things presented in the attachments you have are absolute kinder gentler. It's an interesting read of the statute that I don't necessarily agree with. But I'm trying not to express an opinion yet. I'll wait for the appropriate public hearing. But I would ask during that time, if you think opting out is an option, will you do that? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett. Robert Barnett, 61 Churchill Road. And I saw on the agenda correspondence about changes to the regulations on STRs. And the draft looks very interesting, especially the requirement for audio recordings of the exterior of the property. And I'm thinking, as an owner, that should make enforcement a real layup for the zoning enforcement officer to come into his office, roll back the tapes and see hard evidence of any disturbances to the neighborhood, which was one of the big purposes of having hosted rentals as opposed to non-hosted rentals. So, and and if there was any additional concerns that the commission members have about non-hosted SDRs, possibly I could work with the gentleman, John Carlo, who submitted the correspondence or ledger officials, corporate additional state cards. And then listening to the previous special meeting, some people believe that some people believe that accessory dwelling units or affordable housing may result in a decreased or educational budget. So if that were true, then STRs may be a way to offset that. Offset that because the tourists come, they spend their time and money here, and then they go home with no additional educational expenses for us. Just a comment down.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is additions or changes to the agenda. Are there any?
No, but I would just point out that there, it was in the agenda, it said something about a discussion for a PZ number 23. Actually, there won't be.
Yes, I was gonna note that. Thank you very much. So without objection, the agenda and all the attachments and exhibit contain their own. We made part of the official record. Agenda item number six, we have pre-applications workshops. We have two. The first is proposed 830G subdivision on St. Edward's Wharf Road, like your Connecticut. The presenters are Peter Gardner and Barry Heller. Welcome, gentlemen. Nice to see you in person.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, wherever you may be. And I don't know what to do with this thing. This, this looks like the robot that follows me around in a stop and shop.
Follows you around your house while cleaning.
But it is good to be here in person. My name is Harry Heller. I'm an attorney with an office at 736 Norwich, New Orleans, Turnpike in Uncasville. And I'm representing the informal applicant, Avery Brook Homes LLC. Avery Brook Homes LLC is the owner of about a 9.2-acre parcel of land located on St. Edward's Wharf Road. It's in the R60 zoning district. And we are in the process of formulating a development proposal to develop this property into approximately 40 residential building lots under the Affordable Housing Act, section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes, where the commission's charge is to evaluate the proposal not based on the Euclidean parameters of your zoning regulations, but strictly on safety, health, and welfare issues. And if it meets those parameters, or if you find that there may be health, safety, or welfare issues, you then have to make a determination as to whether or not those health, safety, and welfare issues outweigh the goals of affordable housing contained in the Affordable Housing Act. So this is an area of town where you do not have municipal utilities. We do have very good soils on the property. Can I move around with this?
Could I ask you, where is this on, sorry, corporate, curiosity? Approximately, well, let me.
It's much more fun than we know.
Yeah, it is. It allows me to dance around. So as you can see, we're on the Norvalley side of St. Edward's Wharf Road. We have bought Westley, property of the city of Broughton. We have minimal wetlands on the property. They're on the Eastley and Norvalley periphery of the property. And you can see on the plan that we just handed out to you, we have a soils map on the first page. And we do have excellent soils on the property. That's why we will be able to develop this property in the approximate density that we have on the preliminary plan that you're looking at this evening. We're proposing a horseshoe-style road that will provide access to all of the lots. Again, dependent on final soil testing, at this point, we do not believe that we will need a closed drainage system like you would have to have on a town road. What we're proposing here will be a private road. So in addition to being subject to an affordability plan to comply with 830G, this will also be a common interest community under the Connecticut Common Interest Ownership Act. So there will be an association, and the association will be responsible for the maintenance of the road. And the dues that they pay, of course, are taken into consideration in the affordability plan, determining the price point for your 80% homes and your 60% homes. Again, we have not done complete soil testing on the property. So we do not know for sure that we can get this yield, but we're confident we can get substantial yield out of the property. As I'm sure the commission is aware, 30% of the housing units have to be affordable units, half qualifying for people at the 60% income level and half at the 80% income level. And those common interest community, common expenses go into the formula to determine what those price points are. We have commissioned a hydrogeologic firm to do a hydrogeologic study of the property because this does have onsite wells. So part of the health, safety, and welfare charge that we have to satisfy the commission's inquiry on is that, number one, we have sufficient groundwater to provide onsite wells that can serve these homes and that we can do so without adversely impacting other wells in the area. So we have hired a hydrogeologist to make that investigation for us and to determine what the yield will be. So that, in essence, is what the project is about. We're a ways away from submitting an actual plan for consideration by the commission, but we wanted to come in on an informal basis and solicit any comments or input the commission may have so that we can address them as we move towards final design. And Peter Gardner is here with me tonight. He is our surveyor on the project, and we'll be glad to entertain any comments or questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll turn to Juliette first.
Any consideration for any, you know, recreation space, open space in there? For all those kids to play?
Peter Gardner, no.
Community garden?
And I know it's not something you can take into consideration, but the the statistical data that we're getting now shows about one school-age children, child per household for a three-bedroom home. And one thing, we had met with Juliette, her living early on this, and she had questioned whether or not we could incorporate any duplex units into the project vernacular. And we're looking into that, but it has some challenges, both in meeting the affordability requirements of 830G as well as making sure that the project is bankable. So we are looking at that, and I don't have a final answer at this point.
Thank you. The only reason I was suggesting it, so it didn't look so dense, you know, so some of the lots could be a little bit bigger and they would have some reflex on it, but I understand the challenges.
And just getting back to the question about school-age children, if we do incorporate duplex units, what we're finding is that it's about two-tenths of a school-age child per two-bedroom condominium or apartment unit. So the numbers are vastly different from what they were 25 years ago.
Juliette, anything? Any other members of the commission? Marty, Paul, or Howard? One comment I would have is this dovetails very nicely on our presentation earlier tonight. On affordable housing because this is the kind of thing that we need in town. So the commission certainly encourages you to. Proceed with this and you will find the commission quite supportive of what you you're trying to do here.
A couple of comments on that. First, Peter's group, as you probably know, did Flatbroke and Flatbroke came out well. And the other thing is I've done about ten of these in the last four or five years in various communities in southeastern Connecticut. And I found them all to be very well received. So I, you know, I think there is a concern. Among the commissions in southeastern Connecticut for affordable housing. And you know, when you read a lot of the litigation that's arisen out of affordable housing applications, a lot of it is derived. From the bedroom communities in Fairfield County where they have a different philosophy, but I I think in southeastern Connecticut. There's a real concern on the part of the commissions to make sure they fulfill their obligations to provide affordable housing.
Yeah, we are not Avon or Canton or. Those communities, nor should we aspire to be. We cannot be simply a single family home kind of town. Even though that's the kind of good old days, we cannot do it. And these kind, this kind of housing is something that the town very much needs.
Although it's still a single family house. But they could be rental.
But it's not on the, it's not the single family house on the on the eight and a half. Four bedroom. That's not what we need. We need much more of this kind of house.
We look forward to working.
And also the trade off between density and more open space. People sometimes are opposed to density, but if you have somewhat more density, that means you have somewhat less land that's actually being developed. Which is being not being paved over and not being covered. And so there is that trade off and we need a town. We need to, we need to keep that in mind.
One other concern I have, and it's not singled out to any one project. I think one of the difficulties that I've had as a planner with affordable projects. Is the affordability plan and maintaining it. And getting credit for the units and things like that. It's it's been, it's had some challenges because there's so few, I guess, companies out there that manage it.
Yeah, I I know of only two. Who are administering the.
I'm struggling with that because like when I got here, I realized we didn't even get credit for the ones that we created because. Somehow the information wasn't getting to where it needed to be or to the town.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you'll set up a registry so you can keep track of it.
Well, thank you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much. Mr. Gardner will stay here and probably switch something around for us in a second. All right, we're going to move to the. Second, which is a proposed eight thirty G at one twenty five wheelhead drive. And this is Mr. Gardner again, and also Mark Cohen is involved in this, but Mr. Gardner will fire away.
Evening. Peter Gardner, sixteen forty one Route twelve, Galesford, my office. Mark Cohen, who was before the commission about a month and a half ago, has subdivided this property off of one twenty five. Plan is not yet recorded, but it will be shortly. And we're proposing four lots that are recorded to eight thirty G. We have done soil testing there and soil test results are on the right and we do have great soils and. Will be insured with an application. But we'll be in after we do record this.
I haven't looked at this one yet, so.
The goal right now is to have two curb cuts to serve these four homes, common drives. And we are going to work to keep all the activity more than a hundred feet wetlands. And I showed the set through your home well, well, and subjects on the plan for you and hope to be back shortly with a real application. All right, regulations require prelim.
No, I mean for the first split.
I can't tell you. We did, we did. I'm sorry. So that's, that's our presentation.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, anyone? It does look straightforward. Thank you very much. Considering it comes from Mr. Gardner, don't you mean?
That everybody.
I will move on to agenda item seven. This is public hearing application. This is application PZ twenty two dash three. RA of the planning and zoning commission to consider amendment to replace the existing zoning regulations. Accessory dwelling units with opposed regulation amendments. I will note that the only action to be taken this evening is to accept the application and set the public hearing.
Yeah, although I did want to make mention of one thing. I had been going back and forth with John. I couldn't figure out if the statute allowed you to do that minimum lot size. And what we reading it a lot more carefully, it it does seem to indicate that. So you can't make anything, any of the requirements more restrictive, right?
Yes.
So say you had an R sixty zone with sixty thousand square foot required, you could say for an ADU that you have to have. Fifty nine thousand square feet in order to do it. If you did want to, to remember the first argument we. I said, well, I'll put it in there that it has to meet the minimum lot size and that way we won't end up with ADUs on. Inappropriately small lots or something like that.
I think you still have it. If it, if it needs to meet the bulk requirements for a single family house in that district. I think you already have it. So I mean, you have it as such a one.
It doesn't work. If if there is a house there, you have to allow the ADU. If it meets all the bulk requirement, the other bulk requirement, but lots is not one of them. So.
So the building envelope is the only thing we word.
Right. So I mean, we've been going back and forth about this. So I'm going to give that one a little bit more thought. So we might think about that and I'll obviously take a look at Mr. Treister's comments. And the number of bedrooms came up in Volentown and I I thought that that was not allowed, but I'll. Not that I would want to restrict it, but I'll look into both of those things to get.
I didn't think it was allowed, but I.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it invited.
There again, there was one comment Mr. Treister made that I had looked at when I was acting in the zoning position. I talked to our building official. And we did go through the building codes and it does talk about minimum room dimensions. So when you start looking at, all right, I need a bedroom, a bathroom.
And living area for an apartment by definition.
You can then go into the building code and figure out the minimum dimensions for those.
So how do eighty, how do tiny houses get? Are they not considered dwelling, a single family dwellings? They can't be.
I don't know.
Because an RV wouldn't either. So to me, they're in the same category as RV, which is why I put that in.
Well, if they're on a foundation.
But if they, if they're on a foundation, wouldn't they have to meet the minimum building?
They would need to meet the minimum room sizes.
Right. So we will clarify with the building.
I didn't bring zoning regs with me tonight, but I think eight twelve D applied to apartments, not necessarily single family homes. Just by the way.
Eight twelve B.
That was the section that was quoted for five hundred and forty square feet. I think that's apartments, not single family homes, but I didn't bring my zoning regs with, so.
But anyway, those are the things I was looking at, but we should set the public hearing for next one.
So what we want to do is we want to accept the application and set the public hearing. So. I will, I make a motion to accept PZ twenty two dash three RA and to set a public hearing for the commission's next regular meeting, May twelfth, twenty twenty two. Is there a second?
Second, Marty Wood.
Marty, any discussion? If not, I will call a roll. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. White Carver? Howard?
Yes.
The chair votes, yes, the motion passes for zero. Thank you, everyone. So we will set that public hearing. Agenda item eight, old business discussion on proposed zoning regulation changes. This is Juliet.
So since we're missing a lot of the commission members, I'm not sure how detailed I'm going to get with this, but I will say that the draft I. I'm done. With the draft, it is in front of the attorney. And I did provide, I sent out via email a sort of a high level overview of the major changes. Because the entire thing is so majorly changed. I know I, and I'm so used to some of the regs because I've written them that I've, you know, I'd have to really go back. And figure out what major sections or new regulations I've added, but the upshot is. I did spend a lot of time on your definitions, like you'll see there's many, 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 many more definitions than there were and there probably still more to do. So what I really wanted to ask tonight is the process moving forward. So. In the draft, which I will send out at some point, I have some highlighted areas and those areas. To me mean, I want to ask questions about that to gauge what the town's feeling is versus me just sticking in a number. And then there's still some highlighted green ones that. I don't agree with, or I don't think are legal and I flag those for the attorney as well. Or I need to figure that out a little bit more. So there's not many of those. I have worked through ninety percent of what I wanted to do. And then I've, I've filled in the uses and I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. So when I went through your uses before. The first thing I noticed is that they weren't generalized and that to me is a problem. So I generalized them, you know, made some general categories. Put everything into a category and if I thought wanted something that fell under that higher category of commercial or institutional or whatever. Needed a little more attention than it's listed in there. So I tried to keep some of your bigger uses that you had. But you had a lot of uses that overlapped. I mean, there are multiple uses in one or they're very similar to another. And so all of those have been cleaned up. I've added some uses based on trends in the region. From my time at sector, you know, sort of knowing what the request for uses for building spaces. I've tried to. You know, simplify the process and and make these friendly to a developer and to staff. So, you know, so they know which section to go to, to deal with what for residential things here. For non residential things, these chapters. And so hopefully that will help us in the zoning department not pull our hair out as much as we happen. And then, and then there's a very clear section that you didn't have before on site development standards, which you have to have, like that won't be negotiable at all. Because in order to approve a site plan or a special permit, you have to have the criteria listed in your regs and you didn't have that, you have to have it. So there's some things in there that that are highlighted yellow that we can discuss. And the other big thing to look at is the ag regs. I'm not, I'm not sold on the acreage requirements that you had. It's how you did it with three acres. That to me is still really small to allow some of the things that I would like to allow. You know, some of that activities or accessory uses, but to me that's, I don't, I would recommend that you allow them on that small farm. So. Some of them, like an event barn or something like that, that's that's still too small. So I, I want to have a discussion about that. I did attempt to put in what I thought should be allowed and what zones. Thinking hard about. What those zones actually are, like, you know, your neighborhood commercial zones are what they are. There's no opportunities there to speak up really for much to change. Your commercial marine is very limited, so there's no need to put all of the uses of the universe being allowed in those zones because they're never going to occur there to begin with. Or we may not want any more auto repair shops in our design districts. So take it out now with the ones that are there, they can be there, but we don't need to keep that in there. We're just going to keep on getting them. So that those are what I was thinking of when I put them in here. So I was hoping to. Get one or two of you together. I might adopt Mike again for this exercise and and go through those remaining questions. The ones that I didn't get to ask him before he left and, you know, just to get the the current commission's perspective on it. Before we bring this in front of. You know, for a public hearing. I, there's a lot of pressure right now to get these done for for certain. There's, there's a couple developments. You know, hanging out in the wings that cannot do what they want to do because the regulations won't allow them having to do with multifamily, which you desperately need to. So. Like I said, I've sent you this so you can get an idea of what happened. Those of you that were at that other presentation, you understand how it completely restructured. You know, the the sections to make sure you had ample supplemental regs, your miscellaneous regs. Your residential, non residential site development standards and the process at the end, you know, like. What you have to do for a site plan, how many copies you have to get and the timing and all that kind of stuff. That's more for staff in a way. And I think, you know, and I also tried to take out all of the. You know, some of the conflicts that we talked about last time, the math doesn't work or, but I might have missed something. So. Before I release this to the public, because I know I'm going to get a. Hundred and seventy eight page review of it from a certain number of town. I'm not sure how you want to proceed to that. I mean, my preference is meet with a couple of you and clean up the highlighted ones so that the public doesn't get the highlighted ones. You know, that we've resolved those matters. The best we can and then. Put it out there. Preferably in May or June, but.
That makes sense to me now. Do you want to, so we can only, to avoid the, the freedom of information issue, we can only have two members present at a time. So you would have to do a couple of sessions probably.
Which is fine with me.
Yeah. Mr. Wood?
I just want to ask questions of you.
Marty, how would, how would you like to do it personally in reviewing these? Do you want to do it in person with Juliet? Do you want to do like a Zoom call? What works best for you?
After Tuesday of next week, I, I'm pretty sure I'll be cleared for. Face to, you know, face to face or mass to mass, but but I think this is important enough so that I'd like to be present with Juliet and. A second colleague, if that's, you know, if that's the way we decide to go. But I think this is important enough to do it in person. Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear the the good news as well. We look forward to seeing you in person.
We could do a workshop where you're all here and we plow through this stuff. Together. I mean, that is allowed. You'll have a public here, but they, they can't really comment. So I mean, that is another option. We just have to pick a day to do it. Schedule it. So we could schedule a meeting, public would be in the room, but.
Difficulty, if you do it that way, is if you allow me to speak, why wouldn't you let everybody else speak?
Well, if that was how we did it, you wouldn't be able to.
And it's also kind of difficult because you can't, we don't have them printed and we're all kind of talking or we've got them on the screen and we can't read them. It, I think it might be easier doing it in groups of two.
Would be easier for me because then I can print out your, you know, print out that second one. I mean, there's not a lot. It's just.
Yeah.
And we could. Ones I want to. Get your opinion on.
Whatever, whatever you think works best, we can do with this group and there's nothing that says you and Mr. Cherry can't. Sit down together or you, you Mike and I can't sit down together. And and that way we get his input without. Having, we don't want it to be a big community input.
Well, really, my, my understanding is you're looking for specific things where you want to know. What goes in that block. So we're not, we're not here to dissect and discuss the whole package. We're here to talk about areas of your concern.
Right.
And then the whole package is part of the public hearing process leading towards adoption.
Right. And I, I'm stalling a little bit too because I want to hear from the attorney.
Right, yeah.
You know, before I put it out to the public because all those things in green, I want a definitive answer from, not from you guys, but from the attorney.
So we could do another special meeting. That's the alternative. And Juliet, what works best for you?
Literally either one. It doesn't matter.
So the members of the commission, another special meeting, it would be two weeks from now, probably. No, it won't work. I won't be here, but that doesn't matter because. Everyone else, everyone who could be here could be here and you and I are talking about this stuff anyway. I just happen to know I'm away two weeks now, but. We could do it that way or we could do it in pairs.
It's almost easier to fill in the blanks first.
Yep.
And then everybody gets a full package where.
Yeah.
Yeah, then maybe we have one special meeting where we do.
And then do your special meeting after the blanks are filled in.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Because where there's discretion with an eight-member commission. It may be difficult if you if they're provided with an answer. It's easier.
Yeah, but luckily I I did go through some of them, but. Um, and then the other thing is I, when I, I think within the first two weeks that I was here, I actually did update their subdivision regs. And now I have to go across, you know, the section references are obviously wrong.
Yeah.
But um, that's pretty ready to go as well. Um. Well, not quite. I'm going to go through it now because I did make some changes, significant changes to the regs, so maybe they aren't driving, but. There's some very simple typos and stuff that, I mean, you just need to clean that up pretty desperately. It's it's really outdated. Just references, it still references the planning commission, um, you know, sections that don't exist at all, and I don't, I don't know what they were. So I can't even fix that. But um, so those little changes could actually go through. So let me get that into um. Working order for the public hearing. I don't have any questions there, that these are all pretty straightforward, but.
Only if you're available between now and the end of the month. I mean, once again, I'm I'm retired, retired.
So am I, so. I'm available pretty much all the time, so.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, you and I, you know, and one other person plow through. And, you know, maybe Katie or Marty, somebody who's been on the commission for a while.
Yep, well, Tom.
Okay.
Tom's been on.
Tom's been there.
He's both senior personnel on the commission, so maybe um, Tom and and Mike and and I. As as one, and then could get Marty and Katie and.
Yeah.
We want to get the info. I want to get the senior people who've been on for a while, and then the 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 newer people could get filled in as they as we do it.
Right, okay.
Is that your chapter with everybody?
I actually have a question, which um, and I I I don't want to put a year on it, but I think it was pre-pandemic that when um. There was, is there any violation of the Freedom of Information Act if two of us get together and discuss topics? Uh, it seemed like three years ago, when we were doing the POAM and doing the regs, uh, there was concern around. The the a a not full board meeting to make decisions on the regulations. Am I recalling that correctly or am I not?
It would take, a quorum of you would have to be there, but we're not, we're not making final decisions on anything. It's me asking. I need some clarification on certain things and opinions on other things that I'm going to take from as staff, I can ask. Whatever I want with whoever I want, but um. So no, you wouldn't, I I.
No.
I believe in violation of anything as long as there wasn't form.
Yeah, if three or three or more of us get together on something, then that's a that's a meeting.
Plus, there's no application, right? So it's not like.
No.
You're getting together separately to.
No, but if two of us get together to discuss something, we can't take any any action.
No, there's nothing to take an action on.
So I think we're okay with this one, Marty.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. I just wanted to get clarification of that for for myself. Thanks.
So that's what we'll try to do. We'll we'll try to set up individual meetings with two of us and or plus Mike uh. With Juliet. And then uh, once we get these things ironed out, we'll have a another kind of special meeting, and and we need the input from the attorney as well.
Yeah.
That's that's critical. We need to know what. How how he sees what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, and I think I've pulled out all of your the problem ones, but. There are some that I'd like to keep them on, you know, they're right borderline, they're allowed. Especially with the new changes in statute, I'm struggling with that whole character. That's mainly what I need a lot of help on, like, how do we want to, what is it about your town that you want me to very clearly articulate? And I've tried to do it here, and I I've chosen one way, and I'm curious to see if the attorneys say, okay, that's that's okay.
They very are.
What? Maybe no. Anyway.
Anything else on that, Juliet?
Um, no. So what you can look through here. And then eventually I'll just have your homework as being, look, take a really good, hard look at the uses and the dimensional requirements, and I want some. You know. Thoughtful response to that. So it's not just me taking these decisions for you.
And defensive Juliet, she sat down with our dimensional requirements and the bulk table, and then looked at things that we said we wanted to do. And when you drew it out, you put the numbers on a piece of paper. Very often ran out of paper. Or you were building spaghetti factories. Which we just never sat down to graph out what they're saying.
Oh, you know, that just reminded me. And the other thing with that fits in with the whole affordable housing um discussion. You your subdivision rigs, like your conservation open space subdivisions are are in a way almost stopping of. Eight thirty G developments because you're giving away the farm already. And so if these crazy subdivisions can already occur, what's the incentive, you know, except for, you know, a little more density, sure, but. So we have to be, you know, careful about that. I I, when I did this for another town. And we really limited how subdivisions can be designed, like the number of interior lots or the frontages or things like that, or the length of a flag on a flag lot. If you tweak those things, you're, there's many, you know, fewer lots that can occur. And there's good and bad to that, you know, obviously. If it's done in a conservation commission with good design, that's your best case scenario because you're getting small lots and open space versus. Straight up eight thirty G, small lots, no open space. So it's it's something that, you know, there's no one easy answer. It's not as straightforward as you would think, but it's something that I'm trying to get through in my head now and understand what you all want as a town. You know, but I think your 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 subdivision regs are leading to, as my little presentation, so I'm really badly designed.
Well, I think I think that's a workshop that the planning part of the planning zoning commission ought to do that we haven't looked at. New through roads. Since we put Bittersweet through to Avery Avery Hill and uh. When Fairway Drive was laid out in the sixties.
That's right.
And maybe when we talked about sidewalks, we talked about a road back behind us here. But we haven't looked anywhere else. If you don't look at. Where you want to put roads and increase development in town, what you end up with is these long driveways and these short cul-de-sacs.
Right.
That may not be the best.
Doesn't lead to the best design at all.
Right.
But that's something for the planning commission is.
Yeah. So. So it's 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 been hard to get through these, and it's, you know, we're obviously still going through some staffing challenges in our department, so. Doesn't leave me a lot of time. I was hoping to get these done. Five months ago, so. Going as fast as I can.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right, moving on, we're getting to the end of the agenda. Um. I don't believe any new business. I think we've covered everything. Uh, approval of minutes, uh, the minutes of the um. Last meeting were sent out, and I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Marty.
I moved on Paul's second by Marty. Um, there's no discussion. Um. We'll vote, Marty.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Uh, Howard.
Yes.
I vote yes, so uh, the minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence, uh, item A, that's uh, we're back to this. This issue of how do we, how do we try to deal with the short-term rentals without making them posted? Uh, this is a. This is a, we're we're simply receiving this proposal tonight. I it is something I've asked Juliet to talk to our attorney about. Are there mechanisms by which we can accomplish what we want to accomplish? I noticed in his that. He says, uh, the the owner or designated representative would have to be able to respond within thirty minutes. That's certainly one thing that is worth looking at. Uh, I think that would pass legal muster, but we have to ask the town attorney. Um, I'll ask, getting kind of informal here, I'll ask, Bob, is that the kind of thing that you would see as working as well, that we were to say that. You or your designated representative has to be physically able to respond to a complaint. In a certain amount of time.
Right, yeah, we could we could haggle over exactly.
Yeah, we could haggle over. That's, again, I I think our sense is we want, we want to find a way. To deal with the people who are going to be responsible without having to deal with. Absentee, you know, people in California that are going to come and buy up a bunch of houses and and rent them. So. Um, we're simply receiving this one tonight. We're not discussing it. You've already made some comments. We're not discussing it any further. The the next two items under um. Under correspondence, we do not need to cover since we already covered them. Those are simply welcoming welcoming our newest member and um noting Paul's promotion to. Uh, voting member. The town council policy regarding um, meetings and uh, communications are briefly. We we are now into hybrid meetings, but there is a a section in there that allows. For remote only, uh, if necessary, which is a useful exception. That means when we get to next winter. Uh, if we we know bad weather is coming, we can go to full Zoom. Um, and there is a requirement that if we have a, I think if we have a hybrid meeting, at least two of us must be present. So we lucked out. Two of us are physically present. Um, but even that, I think there could be an exception. Uh, and then the. The electronic communication thing is just a update, I guess, of of the town policy. Um, it suggests that people should have a separate email, but I'm certainly not going to. Get a separate email just for town business because I would never check the thing. Um, and the 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 elected and appointed county officials, they all have their own county mail, but.
You can, you can get one. Yeah, the advantage. Is if there's an FOI request.
And I can take a computer.
Right.
Own.
Yeah, but that isn't, it's not worthy. I I wouldn't check it. That's just my, I mean, I I had three emails already. I don't.
But there is a way if you're using like Outlook to add multiple accounts so that it comes up.
Yeah.
I mean, I've I've got all my email addresses in Outlook, but I'm only using one.
Yeah.
Because if somebody sends it to one of the others.
Yeah, yeah. It'll show up. But anyway, it's it's in there for your information. And then the last item was uh, Mr. Treister's. Um, request for public hearing, which we note that we have received. We got a report. Juliet's town planner report.
Ready. So it in that packet, I did do a quarterly report just for the EDC's purpose, but I'd share it with you anyway. Uh, so the first quarter of this year, we approved over four point six million dollars in the construction value, of course, estimated value. Brought in forty-seven thousand in building permit fees, which is good. Um, the most notable, there is nine new houses in the first quarter. So as you were looking at that chart that they were presenting, I thought I was saying, well, that's off because we had probably twenty something in the year. Well, uh, with many more housing developments. Uh, on the, you know. Waiting in the wings, so uh, our housing start number is going to be huge in the next couple of years. So I thought that was interesting. We've had some business inquiries um, and some new businesses that have opened up, Bark and Gru is well on their way now. They're closing at the third, and. They filed a Mylar, so that's done. I've seen the plans for the liquor store, which is going to be where the vet office. Or that hospital and law school.
Yeah.
I see that the, I think the um, confinement store did open today. I saw an open sign and the door opened, so next is.
I think it did.
Here, the seals is about to have the. Their opening, uh, the coffee shop and the.
Yeah, I think that assault opening already.
Yeah, and the daycare center.
Heard it's good.
Where's it going?
Yeah, yeah. Who seals trapping. Yeah, where's that? Seven. At the at the school.
Hmm.
Yep.
Um, and the GIS update from Klaus's uploaded forty, the forty-seven maps that I've sent, so that's. Moving along nicely, so that's good. He's uh, updated some of the wetlands layers as well, and it's working on the mismatch report now that's. You know, things that are shown on the accessories list, but not on the map and vice versa. So we still have a bit to go through.
The one P presented tonight, RGIS does not show weapons the same way he does, so I'm thinking when. And why the subdivision, yeah.
I know my house isn't correct on there.
None of them are. That's crazy.
What's cartoon?
Uh?
Cartoon.
Yeah, it's a cartoon we rely on, so I'm so anxious for this to get finished. Um, on the enforcement side, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, because I'm not sure if I'm. Should do it in the opener in uh, executive session, but there's been a lot of letters and correspondence coming from uh, the Perkins property. Mr. Perkins is interested in revisiting a stipulated judgment. Um. There's been a onslaught of people that are avidly against that and have been, you know, providing us some some information for us to consider. I think I'm just going to go forward with a meeting with the attorneys and and discuss some of the things that I've, you know, now learned, or. Discuss some of the concerns that I'm hearing and in writing and whatnot. And go from there. Um, but ultimately, I would like the commission to weigh in on that, and I have to find out if uh, we should probably do that in executive session since it's an ongoing enforcement, but. I need a little more guidance on that, but if there's public out there listening, there's no action happening at this time, no stipulated judgments are being changed. Um, it's a discussion that ultimately Mr. Perkins will have to. You know, I mean, anybody has a right to try to. Change a judgment, but I think that the town has to be on board with that. So I think once we get a little more information together, uh, you know, we can. Revisit that.
Were you with that? Were you in that meeting with Fred on Monday?
No.
Because I referred him to. To you and Fred.
Yeah.
Because he had called me, and I said, well. Yeah, your commission's role right now, which is nothing, but we could be involved later on.
And I I mean, I would give you input easily if it gets to that stipulated judgment level, and then then the planning zoning commission already has weighed in somewhere, and I assume you did during that whole process. I don't know that, but.
Yes.
I know I'm on the North Stoneyton side of this same lawsuit, the commission was involved in that, so.
We actually. Did a lot of it in an executive session and then voted outside of executive session to pursue it in court.
Okay, so we we will do the same thing.
Same thing, yeah.
Um, but I I want to, I want to talk with our attorney and um, Perkins attorney too, so I can get the full both sides. And then we can go from there. Um. The town was not awarded the Community Challenge Grant, so uh, that's that's kind of a blow for the. Sewer line, you know, the full sewer line expansion project. I think that the. The money that we did set aside from ARCO will get us through the, you know, at least under the path. And to the high school, so you know, fortunately we done, and there's other avenues we can pursue, but that was kind of a disappointment. But there are EDA grants that we could consider. Um. Somebody else does, because I have no energy anymore.
If you get the Colby Drive, it's a win.
Huh?
You get the Colby Drive, it's a win, because then you can tap. Habitat to come to their property and tap the guy across the street to continue on.
Right, but we still have to, yeah.
You have to get there, yeah.
So, I don't know, but some, I mean, we're still moving forward. It hasn't.
That'll be on the WPCA agenda in two weeks, I know.
Okay.
Would there be, you know, just out of curiosity, would there be appetite for a town to, say you came to Sector and you needed help with a grant? And Sector said, yeah, for three thousand bucks, we'll write it for you.
Yeah, I figured that out of my pocket, I think, at this point.
Yes, I think it would be.
And the town bonded. In the past for things like the upgrades to the sewer streaming plant. Because it was beyond the capability of WPCA to fund that on their own. And it benefited the whole town, the water main that went down Avery Hill. Water main on twelve and one seventeen, those were all bonded as benefit for the town, so.
Yeah, so I was having a conversation with the our regional EDA rep. You know, because one of the things I'm struggling with with Sector is we're just cradling. I mean, I have no capacity, right? So how do you increase the capacity of an organization that's supposed to be regionally helping everybody with economic development? And she did it in Indiana where she charged the township like three thousand dollars to do the grant. And in it, if you got awarded the grant, then part of that grant fund would come for. The organization to actually manage the grant for you, so it takes that burden off from the.
Yeah.
Municipality.
And provides a revenue stream.
But that's a much-needed service here. We'd be able to talk. But that's a much needed service here. We've even talked about like a grant manager because, you know, I mean to juggle land use department and seven grants, I think I'm going, it's, it's
Yeah.
You know, something's, I'm not, I don't have the energy to cold look for new ones, that's for sure.
And every day is different.
Right. Um, yeah, so, so that, the King's Corner project is moving forward, they're they had a bid open today, I believe, so that, that's moving forward. The town green one is almost complete. I'm going to get that accounting all finished by the end of May. Um, the housing rehab uh, needs a new R F P and we're going to have to do two R F Ps for administrative services because we have that hundred thousand dollar ARCA fund, which can't be connected to the C D V G, you know, that, and the other, the state managed, so it's kind of a pain, so I have to send out two R F Ps to essentially get the same person to hopefully do it again, but um, we'll see. Those are my grants. The Tri-Town Trail, I, I don't, I can't understand what we're waiting on. We were awarded it, but some documentation still hasn't come in, so we haven't started that. You know, haven't met to figure out how that's moving forward. As far as prior applications, um so Village Lane, that subdivision that you approved, the, the bond estimates came in, I probably should have brought them in, but they were so low it's not even worth troubling you with because I'm rejecting them. I mean, Steve Maslin rejected it, the ground utilities rejected, so I've asked them to rework that. I have not heard back from them, but they do have an extension to file their Mylar, so they're still okay, but um, you know, it, it was, they were very, very low.
They, they missed filing their Mylar statements before.
I know.
And it had to do with bonding.
Right. Because it's a, you know, it's a sizable amount because they have water main to put in, a road, drainage, um you know, shared utilities and stuff, so there's, that they have to put in before the building burns out. Um I'm still, I'm, I'm, the other thing that's, that's woefully updated are some of these ordinances, and I know Steve Maslin is looking at his too, that some of like the road um building on a, an accepted or an improved road, was looking through that, which is, you know, allowing the planning and zoning commission to grant waivers and things, I'm like so uh, I've taken a stab at that. But is, I mean, the whole thing needs to change, but I think Steve is working on that in part and trying to figure out if things like the stormwater management and he's trying to create a more technical document, like this is, these are the standards, and I, that would be fantastic if, if that could occur so that our zoning regs could just refer to the technical document for some of the stuff and it can come out, and so there's no confusion between subdivision regs, zoning regs and these ordinances. So in the new ordinance is, I've tried to reference, cross-reference, yes, this is the zoning rig, which you've got to look at the ordinance over here. But that would simplify it if that can get done, so I'm hoping that, that will, that it's just furthering uh, you know, making the process easier for a developer and for staff. Uh, we've done a lot of work on updating the website, which was very updated. Um, you know, so that the forms and documents are readily available for people. So we've gotten a lot done considering nobody did her, we do have a wetlands person who's going to give us five hours a week or so and the zoning official from the cog is giving us twenty hours a week. Still going to say it out loud, it's not enough, need a full-time person in there. It's, we're struggling and that Roseanne has nine days left, eight days left, and we won't have and we won't have a person in there before she leaves, which is going to cause some considerable strain on the department as well. So, you may not be chipper, but we're getting a lot done.
All right. Any questions for Julia? If not, any other business to come before the commission?
Um, also, you got a zoning, you did get a zoning enforcement.
Right, tone's on, yeah, we did get them reported, but
It's, uh, he's, I know he's working hard on the, getting the single, the short-term rental
Right.
Things out and we have some new like complaints coming in, but
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot going on there too, yes, so.
No, equally busy. predecessor was and what.
That's hard because you're only there a couple of days and then the phone calls pile up and
I mean, my first week was supposed to be fifteen hours, I worked thirty hours and I told the mayor that that was probably less than what was needed to do everything that the job entailed and I wasn't doing well.
No.
Right. If you have a job description, it's quite a job.
Forty hours a week is, is a reach. I, I don't know how you do that, do everything. I mean, he, he's also inherited a lot of light things. I deferred till spring because it really made no sense in the winter to go do anything and there were some things happening in the background that should close first quarter, which makes a big difference, but
But this, the short-term rentals added to the zoning job now and
Just to go out and drive around.
It's, it's reports, it's, it's way too much for twenty hours a week, it's just way, way too much.
I've been trying to, a bunch of us have been trying to convince the mayor of that.
Yeah, it's more, I think, convincing of, uh, the unions to allow a higher start pay.
Yeah.
Um, and one of the arguments being, you're going to run into a problem if the person isn't Casio certified soon, so.
No, you got till January, just because it takes two years to qualify and you got eight months left.
Right, no problem.
Yeah, no problem, you're right.
But I was saying, if we could put in, in the job description, put you have to be Casio certified, then maybe we could raise the price.
Well, it's a technical position that is not recognized as such.
Where we are, all right. Any other business to come before the commission?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Giancarlo Sarita. I am the person who put together the uh the proposed changes to the S T R, and I know that you mentioned it, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I was wondering if uh, you know, this is the form to elaborate a little bit more on my proposed changes or just to let me know what next steps may be.
Uh, we, we, you know, as I, I think we noted, um, it is something we're interested in, we do want to run uh, it by the, uh, our attorney, uh, to, to, to look at the legal implications. And then I, at some point, we would put this on the agenda. Uh, we hope we put it on the agenda uh, for discussion and that would be the, the time at which we could ask you and, and Mr. Barnett, who was here as well, to elaborate on it. So that's the plan of attack.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is uh, I, we, Mr. Burnett and myself wait uh, till you decide on next steps.
Uh, yes, we're, all we did tonight was receive it. Uh, this is typically when we receive correspondence, we don't take any action on the correspondence. We need to put it on the agenda.
Understood, so is, is there a, uh, estimated time which, uh, this can be expected to be discussed?
Uh, how, what do I wish?
I mean, the attorney is now burdened with reviewing the, you know, the hundred and seventy page proposed regulation change of the rewrite of the zoning regs, and I know they're a little bit behind the eight ball and I, they have to get through the accessory apartment one too, but um but I have mentioned it to the attorney and, you know, to be thinking about, we're trying to figure out, you know, if you can limit it to somebody in town having a second residence versus somebody that lives in Mystic having a sec- second residence and ledgered and you have to treat them equally in, in how we can handle all of that, so um, I haven't given him the copy of what you sent yet because the commission hasn't seen it yet, so, but we will, we will do that.
But it's probably Right, so I guess the only thing that I'd like to say is that, I mean, I listened to all the debates that took place in the past and I regret not being part of them. But uh, you know, the existing edits that I have proposed are addressing and touching on those concerns that the public have, you know, namely uh, destructive guests. So the proposed edits are actually providing the tools for uh, you know, whoever is enforcing these regulations to actually add upon them and actually provide access to any evidence of misbehavior from guests as opposed to just uh me, you know, going with a public uh, uh, version of things. As we all know a person, a witness, a visual witness is the most unreliable account that can be out there, so a video surveillance that is actually uh, you know, kept and recorded outside is the actual evidence, so we're actually proposing that in the new regulation. I think that addresses directly the major concern that some of the neighbors had, had actually had. And I know, you know, it may look harmless but the existing regulation, what it does is actually banning about eighty percent of the people who have the intention to do short-term rental, so you may not say those words, but it's the same strategy that you see, you know, conservative politicians use when they require border ID for a person to actually vote. It's because most people without border IDs don't support it, so this regulation doesn't say it, but it's actually banning the majority of people who have the intention to do short-term rentals.
We're aware of that perspective. Uh, in terms of a timeframe, it's probably a couple of months away. I, I would doubt that this is with, again, with the other issues that are that are pressing right now and again, the need for the attorney to review this. My feeling is this is probably not going to be a May um, item. It's more likely to be a June item, but that's just my sense.
I don't have a good sense.
Pardon?
I don't have a
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, I, I, certainly it's not May. I guess that's the best we can tell you at this point. With that, um Howard, I hope we didn't confuse you too badly in your first meeting here.
No, I think
It's actually my second.
I'm sorry. No, no problem. Uh, I think I hung with the bunches pretty well. Thanks for inviting me aboard.
Welcome, welcome to the party. I, is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, at eight twenty-five P M, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.